And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this little liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bojey, real call please.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Egan is not with us. Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman has been caught. She's right here. She just walked in. Okay.
Right on cue.
Right on cue. Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Daisart?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith is not with us. Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Bojey. We have some special guests here tonight and we just want to acknowledge them. We have from the council, Mr. Wanda Alcorn. Judge Kim Jones. We have Ms. Connie Combrall. We also have from Valero, Tara Rogers. And from Shawman Refinery, we have Jarrett Wimley. I think I pronounced that right. I hope I pronounced that right. And Elizabeth Frost. And we also have our attorney here also tonight, Mr. Andrew Garrett.
Actually, our demographer tonight. Tonight is our demographer. Okay.
Because we're going to close some business tonight on that. But before we get started, I'd just like to say, Saturday, I was really impressed and I was really want to give a pat on the back to all the kids that was marching in the parades. You know, in the bands. They looked fantastic. It was a beautiful day. You know, you couldn't ask for better weather for a parade. And we really shined St. Bernard. So, hands to them. Ms. Daisart, if you want to point a word?
Yes, thank you, Mr. England. At this time, I would ask for a point of privilege and a moment of silence for Patsy Romero. She was, Patsy was one of our secretaries for over thirty-seven years, and she just recently passed. So, our deepest condolences go out to the Romero family. And Patsy was not only a wonderful secretary, but a great friend. You always saw a smile on her face, and anything you could do for her, she wanted to do.
She was a wonderful person.
She was a wonderful person, so.
Well, when I moved from a school system into the central office in nineteen eighty-eight, as we go that far back, that Patsy was one of the first faces that I saw, just smiling, welcoming everyone. And over the years, I've seen her at every event here in St. Bernard Parish. So, wonderful employee with us, did great things for the kids, always asked about the families, and was extremely involved in this community. So, she is a tremendous loss to the St. Bernard Parish, not only school family, but entire community.
Ms. Bojey, I can go back a little further than that. I was a student worker, an office worker at St. Bernard High in the sixties.
Wow.
And Patsy was a secretary at St. Bernard. And I enjoyed working with her. She was a wonderful, sweet person.
A moment of silence.
She broke me in.
She broke you?
Way back in sixty-three.
Okay, moment of silence, please, for Patsy Romero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. England.
You're welcome, Ms. Daisart. And condolences go out to the family. Next on our Communications Update, the Super News. Ms. Pritchett, glad to have you here today.
Hi, good evening, everyone. In your Communications Update for February, you will see all of the releases that have gone out since we last presented our Communications Update in January. We've also included for you our social media analytics for Facebook and Twitter. Our engagement is up across the board. We're doing very well there, making sure that our community is informed. And our district website analytics are doing remarkably well with two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand and ninety-seven visits in the last twenty-eight days. And so, we're definitely getting more people visiting our website, looking for the information. So, we're doing a fantastic job there. Before we go to our special edition of February Super News, I did want to share that all seven of our elementary schools made it into the top thirty-two schools in the Read to the Final Four program with the NCAA, which was absolutely amazing. I did just receive word, they just updated the top sixteen schools in the competition, and I'm proud to let you know that three of our elementary schools made it into the top sixteen. So, we're doing really well. All seven of our elementary schools had the Fan Jam van visit their schools. We just finished with the last one, and our students are so engaged and doing such an amazing job. They're working on their literacy and they're having an amazing time doing it. So, we're so thankful that we've been a part of this program this year, and we hope to be included next year as well. This was the first year that our parish has been invited. With that, this month's Super News is our Student of the Year Spotlight, and so, we're very excited for you to see that.
Before we do that, I just want to call your attention to something. I know we highlight all of the accomplishments of our students, and you see many of them in this month's Super News. But there's just one I wanted to bring to your attention, is that we have another National Merit finalist in Ms. Chloe Jones, and she's an outstanding young lady, tremendous student, and is on the swim team and such, and tremendous all-around kid. So, she did make that designation. She was a semifinalist at the beginning of the year and now has a National Merit finalist designation. So, we're very, very proud of that accomplishment. There's only one-half of one percent of students in the entire country who achieve this particular designation. So, it's an extremely prestigious honor.
Okay, and now, Jack and Barry, when you're ready, let's see our amazing Students of the Year.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News.
For the last several years, I had the privilege of serving on the Student of the Year Selection Committee, which brings together the very best and the brightest students in our district. These outstanding young people represent all that is good in our public schools, and each is a great ambassador in and out of the classroom. So, today, on this very special edition of Super News, it's my honor to present our eleven Students of the Year. Let's meet them now.
My teachers and the staff at my school would probably say that I'm a hard worker because I do all these clubs, I do all these sports, and I do many community service projects a year. And I feel like doing all that, it's very hard to balance your grades, but I still manage to balance all my grades, and I'm still a four-point-oh GPA student.
Most likely pay attention, follow the rules, don't get into fights, maybe try to help out people. I help out, try to figure out who I can help out most of the time, because I kind of like helping people. It makes me feel good.
I get straight A's. I help people out in class with things that they all struggle on. My teacher last year actually helped me, and I kind of want to be a teacher whenever I grow up, along with a veterinarian.
My fellow peers, they often tell me that I'm a good leader. They tell me that I see other people's opinions, and I don't just disregard them. I take them into account, and I alter my ideas, not to just please them, but to satisfy the needs of the project or whatever we're trying to accomplish. If it's something in the community, or it's something in school, a test, quiz, we, I have to be able to take into some other people's accounts, even if they are different than mine, to be able to better myself and succeed.
I am a kind person, smart, and giving, and I also listen a lot. I pay attention in school. I always help out others, and I think that I'm just, you know, a good person.
They have a bunch of clubs that you can join, and any student from third through fifth can join any club, like four-H and Beta Club that I'm in, and it gives you a well opportunity, so you can choose what you would like to do.
I'm in the Beta Club this year, and I'm the captain of the dance team, the Bells.
I'm in Beta Club. I'm in morning announcements, where I do news, and I am in pep squad. I'm the captain of pep squad.
Academic Games, I do chorus, and I do beta.
The teachers, the teachers are my favorite thing about Shawman High. They're always there for you, and whenever you need anything, I will say, shout out to Ms. Ross, the best math teacher I have ever had in my life. That lady is an excellent teacher. But yeah, just the teachers, you know, they're always there for you, and whatever you need, they'll, they'll help you.
Ms. Marisi from seventh grade, she was a great teacher. She was my ULA teacher, and she was very nice, and she knew Spanish too, so that was kind of like a connection, and she was very kind to me, so she inspired me a lot.
There's a diverse group of people that attend here, it's teachers, students, faculty members. It's all a different bunch of people, so I get to see different opinions, different ideas, different perspectives, from different angles. So, I can see what's going on in this world, and I see it through a bunch of different eyes, not just my own.
St. Bernard Middle's were like a family to me because the teachers are there to teach you, and they help with like math problems and the education side of things, but they're also there for you as a person, because at the end of the day, you're a person, they're a person, and they're just kind of going to be there for you. Like, if you're struggling with something, whether that be education, something at home, they're always going to be there for you, and they're kind of like, maybe like your sister, or like a second mom to you.
My future plans, I will be enrolled in Villanova in the fall. As a Wildcat, I will major in criminology, graduate with my bachelor's degree, move on to get my master's degree, and then hopefully become an FBI agent.
Want to be an aerospace engineer because I've always loved engineering. I love building things, and astronomy has really amazed me. I love how space works. So, if you combine those two things, you get aerospace engineering, and it's really, and it's really cool how you can do two jobs almost at once.
Well, I hope to see myself graduating from college. Hopefully, I want to be able to attend law school somewhere prestigious. So, I want to be able to fall, and fall behind my father and become a politician, or something that involves the politics, law enforcement, or anything that really just involves following the law and going to, attending a law school.
My future plan is to grow out my hair and cut off it for locks of love. I, I feel like it will be helping someone who has cancer or who can't grow hair. So, it makes me feel happy when I, it's going to make me feel happy when I donate it in the future. And I've also liked to be a future YouTuber, and maybe another job, who knows? I don't really know.
I definitely want to be a veterinarian, because I love pets. I have three dogs and one cat, and my cat, I had two cats at once, but when I was little, my cat, my cat got sick and passed away. So, I felt helpless, that I couldn't help him. So, when I'm older, I want to help pets have, live longer lives and live healthier lives.
Anything is possible if I follow my dreams and if I do my best, and that the superstars, it lets me know that I'm a star and that I can do anything that's possible.
The thing that I'm most proud of with all my community service activities would be Feed It Forward, where it was something that my mom and I started. So, if you go to Muro Food Store by the ferry, and you want to donate six dollars, if you're feeling like, if you're feeling blessed and you want to donate six dollars, you can put, the cashier will put a ticket up on the board, and someone who's struggling or doesn't have enough money to afford a nice hot meal, they can go grab a ticket off the board, they'll give it to the cashier. The cashier will give them a nice hot meal to take out with them, and it's something nice to do. Instead of staying hungry that day, you're feeling down on yourself, you're struggling, you can go get a nice hot meal to maybe lighten up your day a little bit.
I feel like I can inspire other people that language, that English is not their first language, that they can achieve great things. Because since I'm not, like, I wasn't fluent in English when I first came here, and I didn't have the best grades, but those improved as I learned English, and I feel like they shows me because I can inspire others.
The advice that I would give to a freshman coming into Shawman High is, don't be afraid, and be involved in as many things as you can be involved in.
I would tell them to do the best they can. Like, it doesn't really matter what grades you get, just like, do your best at life.
Keep your grades up, definitely. Do what the teacher asks. Like, you can ask teacher questions, but like, know the teacher's rules, and know the teacher's like personal rules and boundaries, so like, you can fulfill those and not get like too crazy.
I'm grateful for my mother and my father for teaching me fifth, fifth grade stuff when I moved on to fifth grade, and, you know, like, taking care of me, like, anytime like I fall off something, they always bring me back up and like, help me up, and they always make sure I'm okay.
I'm really thankful for all the opportunities that I've been given at Shawman High. Just being able to be as involved as I possibly can be, and my teachers always being there for me. Administration is amazing, so, yeah, just thankful for all the opportunities that I've been given.
When I see a heart, I think of friendship, honestly, because like all those little friendship bracelets and necklaces that have like a little heart, and you put them together. Because like, I feel like one piece and one piece of the heart together makes me complete, because like, I can't just be alone by myself. I couldn't live in a world where it was just me. I, I need friends, and I need family to be like that.
To love other people, no matter who they are, and to care for people and always be there for them.
We also like to congratulate our three district-wide winners. We are proud of you, and we know that you will represent us well. Congratulations to you all, and thanks to all of our teachers and staff who helped our students each day. And we'll see you next month on Super News, where we always let the Super News roll.
Take over from Barry and Lex.
No, no, Barry's got me beat, my hands down. Ms. Pritchett, another fine job. These are the students that, you know, make our district shine, and it goes a long way. But all of our students are as terrific in this parish. So, any questions for Ms. Pritchett? Oh, and one other thing I want to say, Ms. Jackson was a judge.
Oh.
And she thoroughly enjoyed it, I understand.
I'm sure you'll be right back in your right.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now, I've been requested to move to two-point-four, a motion, I need a motion to move that two-point-four to two-point-one, um, two-point-two, and then we'll go for mayor.
I will so move.
Have a motion by Ms. Daisart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No move. So, now we have the Autism Awareness Crew donation to the St. Bernard Parish School Board Special Education Department. Ms. Sharon McCurt, glad to have you here today.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm happy to be here this evening, and we do have a crew out here. I appreciate you moving us up on the agenda, but we still might be here a little longer, but anyway. So, thank you for having us tonight. It's my pleasure to be here as a supervisor of special ed, but I would like you to take a second to picture this. How can you make the biggest impact on individuals who have daily struggles with anxiety, with sensory processing, and sometimes basic communication? Imagine a moment of this feeling, and then imagine the impact of living every moment with this very same struggle. The mission of the St. Bernard Autism Awareness Crew is to identify and assist with the needs of the St. Bernard families dealing with the daily struggles of caring for children, grandchildren, and other family members with autism and other related conditions. The St. Bernard Autism Awareness Crew, in conjunction with the St. Bernard Parish Special Education Department, began a partnership to assist students, teachers, staffs, families, and community members through the Sensory Go-Bag Project. This initiative has proven to be extremely successful, as we have noticed small and large improvements in multiple settings, especially during the pandemic, when these struggles have intensified. These sensory bags filled with daily tools are used in schools such as classrooms, playgrounds, cafeterias, hallways, and buses. In the St. Bernard Parish Police Vehicles, the Acadian Ambulance, EMT, as well as the St. Bernard Fire Trucks. In the event that a community member responds to an emergency situation and someone is in need of a sensory tool they are available. The St. Bernard Parish Autism Awareness Crew provides introductory educational talks to the community, first responders, and regarding the use and purpose of these bags of tools. Our school partnership with this organization is not only valuable to the students of this district, but it is a resource for families. Recently, the St. Bernard Autism Awareness Crew sponsored a two, a two thousand and twenty-one mini grant program for teachers and families of St. Bernard, to apply for up to two hundred dollars towards specific purchases. I am proud to report that several teachers in our district was awarded the grant. All of this organization's community outreach events and trainings are funded through the annual fundraising event, the Parish Derby, formerly Derby at Dockville, which is held in conjunction with the Kentucky Derby in May. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the current board members of the crew. President, Daniel Daisart. Vice President, Melinda Luna. Secretary, Wanda Alcorn. Our treasurer, Elizabeth Knott, could not be with us tonight, but we also have our board member, Alvin Jones. Board member, Kim Jones. Board member, Jeff Fager. Board member Lisa Onstron could not be with us tonight, but we do have board member Abby Donnelly. And board member Elizabeth Thotrey could not be with us tonight. I would like to ask our board, our board president, Danny Daisart, to come to make the presentation to the St. Bernard Parish Special Education Department.
You summed everything up wonderfully.
Got it off your website. Stand right here so he can see you. Look.
As she said, you know, we're happy to have this partnership with the school district and with the sensory bag program. We were also very happy this year to start our mini grant program, which we did in December of this past year, and we'll do it again next year. And as she said, you know, a lot of input and a lot of involvement from the teachers and the district, that we're able to receive grants for, you know, really any need for any kid with special needs in the school district. As she said, the sensory bag program has been widely successful, not only for the school district, but for first responders, we've been able to provide them to the sheriff's office, as well as the fire department and EMS. In addition to that, we're happy this year that we're actually doing sensory bags for all schools, all students within St. Bernard, so we're very happy for that as well. In addition to that, this past summer, we did offer swimming lessons for students, or students with, for childs with individual disabilities that were tailored to their needs. We're able to offer that to our crew members. And as she said, our main fundraising event is this coming May, May seventh. It's the Kentucky Derby Day. It'll be at the Civic Center, and we're very excited to have that. We can't, hey, ma'am. We couldn't do it without partnership with the school district, with other local providers and businesses here in St. Bernard Parish that have supported us through and through, and we're very thankful. And with that, you know, from myself and the rest of the board, we're very happy to present this check to the school district for the sensory bags and for our ongoing partnership.
Thank you very much. We're very thankful for the Autism Awareness Crew. We have been working together for several years on many different projects. In fact, most of the individuals who are, every one of the individuals standing behind me also help us with our Special Olympics, which we'll talk about soon too. I did want to recognize one more individual, our special ed coordinator's here with us tonight, Allison Grove. She happens to be helping with some of the students with their sensory needs, but she's back there somewhere working hard. But anyway, so thank you very much to the Autism Awareness Crew and to the St. Bernard Parish School Board for your partnership. We appreciate it.
Ms. Currie. Ms. Daisart, what is in that package?
Yeah, well, we've been using a few of them with our.
You really hit them going for a while.
Yeah, so, this is a sample, but, you know, we've got fidget, fidget poppers. If you've seen the kids, they're fidget poppers, fidget tools, fidget spinners, different sort of sensory, motor skill games to trace the ball through. And so, you know, all sorts of different things, you know, for kids, no matter what sort of their sensory diet is, what they need, it can be used. And so, you know, it's been wildly successful, I think, both in the school district as well as, you know, first responders and stuff, in terms of, you know, whether a child has autism or some other special need, if they have a sensory issue, a sensory diet, these items, you know, can assist them with that. The other thing I did want to mention too, I forgot to mention a moment ago, is that in addition to the mini grant program and the sensory tools, we have partnered recently with Nudus Community College, so we'll be expanding that in terms of our STEAM classes. And Ms. Currie may have mentioned that. We're very happy with those, and we intend to do those in the future as well. We continue to do, you know, on a quarterly or monthly basis, our parent training sessions, whether it be for speech therapy, A to Z on IEP programs, when they come to the IEP meetings for the school district. And so, we continue to do those, ABA. And so, in terms of, you know, if anybody, whoever's watching, anybody that needs to sign up for the crew that is interested in any of these events, please look us up on Facebook, or they can reach out to us at STB Autism Crew, that's with a K, one of our crew, K R E W E dot org, STB Autism Crew dot org. So, do you have any other questions?
No, no, the only thing I have to say is this, this process of what y'all do is very, you know, is fantastic, and we're glad to be a partner with y'all.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Daisart.
Real quickly, thank you for your presentation tonight, and I want to thank the, the crew of Autism for all of your hard work. We know you work all year round to get funds to donate for our, which benefits all of our students. So, we appreciate all your hard work, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Very much.
And y'all have them on your agenda tonight, but our three biggest, you know, contributors to the Autism Crew the last year has been, you know, Valero, Shawman Refining, and the Miro Foundation. Again, without, without the partnership with the, the community and the businesses throughout St. Bernard, you know, we wouldn't be able to do these things for the school district and for our kids. And so, we hope to continue to expand our offerings to the parish, and we thank y'all again.
Right, and y'all do the Kentucky Derby too.
Right, right. And you know.
It's sold out already.
No, and we do, we want to thank you for everything that y'all do, but, and you know, the money is very important to buy these things, but what's most important is the time that you contribute, not only with your own children, but to all of the children in our school system who need more support, and y'all are there, physically there to help do these things. And that's much more precious than the dollars we're talking about.
One hundred percent, Ms. Bojey, and I can't say enough about the parents, and, you know, our board and our derby committee, it's made up of both, you know, parents with, with children with, you know, autism or other disabilities, and some, you know, that are just volunteers. And so, you know, it's completely volunteer, and everybody puts, you know, their full most effort forward in, in making these things happen. And again, I can't say enough about every single one of my board members. And again, I can't say enough about every single one of my board members and the committee members that help us, you know, day in, week, month out, put together all these programs and put together these, you know, offerings for the people of St. Bernard Parish. So, again, I want to thank them as well.
Well, thank all of you.
Thanks, y'all. Any other questions from board members? Okay, we'll go back to 2.2, Shawman Refinery donation to the St. Bernard Parish School Board is Pub the Power Up Program, Rewarding Reading, Respect, and Responsibility. Good afternoon.
Good evening. And I was worried about following the students.
That's a tough act.
Hello, my name is Jared Wimbley, and I'm the refinery manager at Shawman Refining. On behalf of our employees, I'd like to present this $20,000 check for the new St. Bernard Parish Elementary Schools program called UP, or Power Up Program. And as Mr. England said, this program rewards students for reading, respect, and responsibility. So, reading, you as educators and myself as a parent, know that reading is the primary building block for the other academic disciplines. When a child gets this core foundation right, the rest will follow. Respect, teaching students, respect is also essential to allow students to have a healthy learning environment. Only when a student feels safe around their peers and teachers can they learn. And then responsibility, teaching students' responsibility is also key to their future academic growth and success. Starting with small tasks and building upon these can give our children the building blocks of responsibility, not only in the classroom, but for the rest of their lives. Together, we launched this new program in hopes that it will enrich the lives of all the elementary students in St. Bernard Parish, and hopefully one day become Students of the Year and get to be on the video. That was pretty powerful. I can't believe the goals and aspirations those kids have. Anyway, that's my presentation. Thank you for your time and support, and as always, we're happy to start this new program.
We really want to thank Shawman Refinery for stepping up to the plate to be a partnership with our school system, but a special shout-out would go out to Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson worked with Ms. Frost, you know, to put all this program together, and we did have some help from Mr. Lemoine, too, Mr. Barry Lemoine. So, but we want to get a shout-out to Ms. Jackson. Very good job.
Thank you. And I just want to say, it was a pleasure working with you guys and making this happen. It's nice every once in a while to roll up your sleeves and dig in and like make a new positive program that I think is really going to have a huge impact on our students' lives, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know you put up the graphic, which is...
Yes, you guys did a good job.
Cute little thing to show to everyone.
It came out really well.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I just want to say that I had a meeting, you know, with Mr. Wimbley when he first came on as refinery manager, and it's really good to see a native Louisiana come in and take over the management of the refinery here as well. I think from the Crowley area, right?
Church Point.
Church Point. Well, I was close.
Katy Parish.
Yeah, we talked about some of my relatives down there and some things we had in common, so we're really happy to have you there, leading the refinery, and look forward to a continued partnership with you at Shawman Refining.
I agree, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to 2.3, Valero Benefit for Children's Donation to the St. Bernard Parish School Board for Special Olympics. Jeremy Kurt again.
I'm back, thank you. Appreciate you having me again. There's a lot to go on tonight, but that's just the benefit of actually getting to lead this great district, to be involved in the community with our partnerships, and it just brings me great pleasure to come up here again to talk to you one more time. But before I begin, I'd like to bring to the podium Ms. Taryn Rogers from Valero. I'd like also Mr. Paul Frye, our Events Director for Special Olympics, our Special Education Coordinator and People Praising Coordinator, Allison Grow, and Alvin Jones, our Committee Director for Special Olympics, if you can come on up now. So, as the Special Education Supervisor, as I said, of this great district, St. Bernard, and on behalf of the St. Bernard Parish School Special Olympics Planning Committee members who are here tonight, it gives me great pleasure to speak to you all and shed a light on the reason why we are here. So, tonight, we want to recognize the generosity of our community business partner, Valero Miro Refining, in conjunction with the Valero Benefit for Children. Each year, the Valero Energy Foundation chooses a recipient to donate the proceeds raised from their magnificent annual Valero Texas Open Golf Tournament held in San Antonio, Texas. Net proceeds from this Valero Benefit for Children are distributed to children's charities and communities where Valero has major operations. The 2021 Valero Benefit for Children, together with the Valero Texas Open, generated more than $16 million in net profits. In the 99-year history, so we're upon our 100, right?
Yes.
Taryn? Uh-huh, I'm excited about that. The history of Valero Texas Open has raised over $187 million for net charitable contributions throughout their communities. I am overjoyed to announce that the St. Bernard Parish Public Schools Special Olympics was given again this year, was chosen again this year as the beneficiary of this event. As a reminder, I have placed a save the date in your folders tonight. Our Special Olympics event is so gracious to have such supporting community partnerships with Valero and so many others. Valero has been and continues to be a blessing to our school system, but especially to our Special Olympians. We did have a few Special Olympians here tonight you got to meet, and we had one future, little Logan, he's going to grow into a Special Olympian because they start at age eight and go on up through high school. So, he will have his chance at some point. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you and accept a donation from Ms. Taryn Rogers. She is the Community Relations and Governmental Affairs Manager for Valero. And if you don't mind, I'll give you the floor, and if you want to say a couple of things, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. So, our Vice President and General Manager, Leslie Sullivan, couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted to tell everyone hello and that she's so grateful for this honor. As Jeremy said, we have our Valero Texas Open Golf Tournament every year in San Antonio, and after they pay out their expenses, we get the proceeds, and we get to sit back and really look at who's doing the work in our local community. And Special Olympics is always one that our employees remember. Not only do we give monetarily, but we really, really enjoy getting out there and volunteering with the folks, partnering with the parish, and it's one that, you know, all I have to do is email the flyer out to the employees, and I just get people signing up right away because it's just such a good thing that they're doing here in the parish. So, just really want to say thank you, and we truly appreciate the partnership.
Right. Well, Ms. Rogers, it's a pleasure having you here tonight, you know, for the donations, you know, to our school system, but the Special Olympics is special, is really special. And I tell you what, I really want to appreciate all the volunteers, because it takes a whole village of people to put this together, but it does take that cash, too. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Our volunteers love it. I wish they could all be here tonight, but I will go back and let them know of this honor.
But the little crew that you got right behind you?
I approve that message. I just wanted to just give you a couple of, I guess, pieces of information, especially to the public. We will have our opening ceremonies for the Special Olympics on Friday, March 25th. Hopefully, it will not rain, right? Those opening ceremonies will begin at 9:30, with the games following immediately, hopefully at least by 10 o'clock. And then we will have a medals presentation at 1:00. We're doing things a little different due to COVID, so we're trying to embrace some new ways to handle our games. So, the students will be in their school pods for a little bit of a change, and so they'll do their events in almost a rotation, if you will, and then we'll have the medal presentation at the end. So, we're hoping that we can, you know, limit the exposure at this time, but we're going to play it safe, and we have a lot of hand sanitizer. We'll have some hand washing stations. We'll have face painting again, as well as the boogie booth. Yeah, what's it called?
Photobooth.
Photobooth, thank you. Maybe boogie, I don't know. I see a lot of things going on. So, but we have that like in a rotation, so that the kids will all get to enjoy the activities, and then, of course, we have many, many partnerships in our community. I don't want to sit here and name them all because I don't have a list, but you'll get to see them, and we will have signs out for the kids and directional things. And so, not just our community helpers and our individuals behind me, but I want to recognize the teachers, the administrators, the staff that comes that day, and the buddies from Shawman High. It is an enormous event. When we was talking about, can we bring this back? It was a no-brainer. We were going to do the best we could, what we could do at the time, but it's now kind of grown back into where we were. I'm trying to calm them down a little bit back here, but, you know, it will be just as wonderful and an incredible event as it always has been. So, we're looking forward to you guys walking in a parade with us in the beginning, okay, and staying for a little bit to see some of the athletes perform. So, anyway, did I leave anything out?
No.
Great, so we will be awarding some medals. All kids get participation medals that morning, but then maybe we'll have some gold, silver, and bronze winners to shed. So, I just want to close with this, and that is the Special Olympics oath, and it says, "Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt." And so, tonight, our Special Olympics Committee gave you a very own lanyard. You can wear it on at night. You will receive a T-shirt for the parade, too, or that day, rather. You'll receive a T-shirt to wear, and we're excited and hope that each one of you can make it out to our event on Friday, March 25th. And again, I want to thank you, Ms. Taryn Rogers, for coming tonight, and Valero for the partnership that they have provided for me in the last five, six, seven, eight, 10 years. It's just been wonderful. 13, thank you, 13. So, do you have any questions or comments?
Right, Ms. Dyson.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kurt. I just want to thank Valero and, you know, the team who puts on, helps put together the Special Olympics. It's just, you know, it is a very, very special event, and the faces on the students that day are just incredible. They are just smiling, and they feel like they're all winners. And it's just a great, wonderful event, and I'm so glad we're going to be able to do it again this year. And our deepest thanks go out to Valero and all of the volunteers who come, and not only are there volunteers from Valero and Shawman Refining, but also the sheriff's office and even, you know, just community members who come out to volunteer. Firefighters, and, you know, it's just a great event to see the community come together. And also, a very special thank you goes out to Shawman Refining also, and Shawman Refining and Valero have been wonderful community partners, and we thank y'all very much. As Mr. England said, it takes money, but also volunteers, so we appreciate y'all's gifts tonight, well, very, very generous, and we thank you.
Just wanted to give you a quick update. For those of you who follow the St. Bernard Chamber of Commerce, they have an email blast, and they have always graciously helped us, and that's where we generate most of our funds. That email blast went out this morning. Just to give you a quick update, we've already gotten nine responses today, so we are getting more money as we speak. And it is a true community effort with volunteers, children, and the first responders. There's over 1,100 people that put this event on. And so, it is truly community. We see it as a parent of a child that participates. We appreciate the school board, but also all of our main sponsors, and we couldn't do it without you. And, you know, most people run when I come because you see me, I'm on a few different boards. I hit you for money, but it's never for me. It's always for the kids, and, but those of you who know me, that's what it's about. But it's also this crew and this group of Olympians are really, really special, and we voted the number one regional in the state up until the pandemic, and we want to get that ranking back because nobody puts on a regional like St. Bernard.
No.
Thank you.
Y'all put on a tremendous event, and when I talk to people in other areas of the state, and they actually come and look at what we do, they are in awe of all of the people that we have involved within the community. And when Ms. Kurt came to me and said, "Well, what do you think we're going to have it this year?" I said, "We have to have it this year because if I see Bren Plasia," and it's one of our students who participates, "Every time I see her, she berates me. How can we not have this again?" So, I just want to do a shout-out, if she's listening, to Bren, to get herself ready because we are going to be back on March 25th for the Special Olympics.
I'm just going to tell you what Ms. Plasia said is really important. When we got together as a team 13 years ago, back when I became supervisor, this has been going on for years, even before me. I ran the concession stand. I sold, our students made brownies, and we sold them for profit for our students to go on community vocational training, you know, field trips and stuff. So, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that go on. But, you know, when we came together, we talked about what is the best way for these kids to enjoy a local game, but if in the event they don't get a medal and don't qualify for state, what happens at state that we can bring here? And so, that's why we've expanded to what we have, the face painting, the games, you know, all those extra things that happen at state. Our students here in St. Bernard get to experience that right here on the grounds. I wanted Paul just to give you the basics of how many kids will be participating this year, as well as some of the things he didn't want to speak, but of course he did. Anyway, talk a little bit about what we purchased and what some of the funding.
Well, this year, we're anticipating 222 athletes that will participate in our games. Of course, they'll get their T-shirts. It'll work a little differently this year because of supply, we're going to have one color for all the elementary schools, with they'll have their logos on their right-hand, right sleeves. Another color will be for the middle schools and one color for the high school, and we've taken on this year that we're going to go with purple, green, and gold. So, though it's a little bit after Mardi Gras, we're still going to do a little bit with the colors. Some of the things that they will be getting besides their T-shirts is they're getting backpacks that'll have the logo embroidered on them. There's going to be magnets. Each child that participates will get a yard sign that says, "I'm a Special Olympian." Let's see, besides T-shirts, magnets, there'll be...
Lanyards?
Lanyards, there'll be kind of a sensory item, like a fidget cube that they can play around with. There'll be stress balls, and that's just off the top of my head. There's probably more somewhere along the line I'd be adding in there. I don't know. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Frye?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, thank you.
Thanks again. And again, your support for this event means the world to not just myself, but to Allison and our team here at central office, as well as in the schools. So, again, we'll see you on March 25th for our entry opening ceremonies. We do have a torch bearer this year who...
Terion Payne.
Terion Payne has been chosen as our torch bearer. Is she in 12th grade? Yeah, we're getting clues, huh? She's a 12th grader at Shawman High School, right? So, we're excited about that, and she's even more excited when you get to see her carry that torch, it will just light your life up. So, please be there. We practiced the other day, went over and practiced with her a little bit, and then we did, you know, the cha-cha and a few other things. So, we had a really good time the other day at Shawman High School on a Friday. So, anyway, without further ado, I'd like to turn it back over to our president, Ms. England.
Thank you, Ms. Kurt. Any questions from board members? Thank you again. Been looking forward to it. Okay, we've got approval of the minutes, approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee meeting minutes of February 8th, 2022, into the minutes of February 22 of 2022. They've got a lot of twos there. Regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Warner, second by Ms. White. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Approved for the regular monthly meeting of January 25th, 2022, as published on February 18th, 2022.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Dyson, second by Ms. Jackson. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Approved of special meeting, alternative replacement appeal minutes of February 8th, 2022, as published on February 18th, 2022.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr....
Second.
This white, second by Mr. White. Mr. Long, is the motion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, personnel changes, review of performance contract you have in your packet. Witness Fochay has looked over, and she's setting up the whole new staff for next year.
Well, these should just renew them for your information.
This is information only, so.
Okay.
In fact, when you all finish with it, give it back to Angie. No, so because that is personal information. Yeah.
Just a quick comment on these new contracts or continued contracts. I just want to say, we have so many wonderful employees who've been with us many, many years, and we're very blessed in St. Bernard Parish that we have so many wonderful administrators and employees with us who remain with us and work very hard each and every day with our students. So, we want to thank them all.
You're so correct, Ms. Dyson, because if you put the years that they're with our system, it's countless. I mean, you can't buy that type of information. But, Ms. Dyson, anyone else? Then we've got 4.2, personnel changes for February 2022 is in your packet.
And again, this is for informational purposes only, and you can see changes since the committee meeting. And this is the time of the year when we are, you know, notified of different retirements and such, as you can see.
And Ms. Dyson, I know you like to do the retirements.
Thank you, Mr. England. As we saw, the personnel contracts extended, it's very good to see all these extended contracts. And retirements are very difficult for us to see, even though these, all of these employees definitely deserve a happy, long retirement. But I want to thank each and every one of them for all that they use of service. We have Shemaine Raimondo, Marcel Montgomery, Olga Campo, Marion Goday, Clara Caserta, Phyllis Martinez, and Barbara Rodriguez. And each and every one of these individuals have given many, many years of their life to our students, and we want to thank them very much and to wish them a very happy retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson.
We have a lot of great employees who are retiring. But happy retirement to each of them, well deserved.
Very well said, Ms. Dyson. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Long?
Congratulations to all the retirees, but I'd like to make a special note of Clara Caserta. She's always been a friend, and I'm sad to see her retire. And I'm sure she's going to be missed. I know she's a hard worker and very dedicated.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Long. Anyone else? Okay, move on to number five. Approval of administration request for permission to solicit for the RFP for literacy intervention materials. This was a recommendation by the committee. Have a motion by Ms. Lamont, second by Ms. Jackson. As I stated, it was a recommendation. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. 5.2, approval of administration request to advertise to bid to bread and bread products for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 for the St. Bernard Parish School Board. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Have a move by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. Lamont. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Approved for administration request to advertise to bid for milk and milk products for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 for the St. Bernard Parish School Board recommended. This was a recommendation by the committee. Have a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Bowman. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. 5.4, approval administration request to advertise to bid for food products for the period of July 1, 2022 through December 31st, 2022 for the St. Bernard Parish School Board. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Long, second by Ms. Jackson. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, adoption for resolution redistricting plan for the St. Bernard Parish School Board. Ms. Fochay?
Okay, and we have with us tonight, Ms. Danny Garrett, who's working as our demographer in this endeavor. And I don't know, Ms. Garrett, if you wanted to just say a few words as an introduction.
Just to let you know, first of all, I think your constituents need to know that y'all are a great group of people to work with. It doesn't always work this easily. Y'all all work toward getting a plan that makes sense for your parish and putting aside individual wants and desires when you needed to to make the numbers work. And I know that there is one small amendment, just, I mean, literally it moved it. It's the one we talked about when y'all introduced the resolution, just moves it one street over. And other than that, as I said, the information's on the report. You've got your districts within the acceptable deviations. I know the registrar has looked at the maps. I think she's pleased that we didn't split more precincts than we needed to. And I just wanted to commend y'all for the work that done that you did. And as, and as a side note, as the father of an Asperner's child, who is now a computer programmer with the state, what y'all are doing is going to have benefits in the future, trust me. Because we had to move our son to public school where he could get the accommodations, and it was all the difference in the world. Congratulations to y'all.
Thank you.
Ms. Fochay, would you read your mail?
Yeah, but, you know, and before we take a look at the amendment and the resolutions, I just want to do, I just want to say publicly that this resolution was originally introduced by the board in January. We had three different meetings on which public comment was to be taken. We had one public comment to offer an amendment, which we're going to do momentarily. It was on the website. So, we went through a very lengthy process of soliciting public participation within this process and offering an avenue for them to come in either to our board meeting or to respond on our website. And with that, I do know that we have one amendment to offer, and I think Mr. Campbell would like to make a motion.
Would you read the?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Campbell. The amendment that Mr. Campbell wishes to mention, and you have it right behind the original resolution. The amendment that push it to amend the description of the portion of Precinct 55 that is in District 10 to read as follows. That portion of Precinct 55, beginning at the intersection of Bayou Road and Sebastopol Lane, then southerly on Sebastopol Lane to the intersection with the Southern Railroad, also boundary of Precinct 55, then westerly along the boundary of the railroad to the intersection with the Forti Orpren Canal, then northerly along the canal, which is also the boundary between Precinct 55 and 53, to the intersection with Bayou Road, then easterly along Bayou Road to the point of beginning. So, this would be the amendment that Mr. Campbell is offering to the original resolution. I think you need to say.
So, I need, we have a motion by Mr. Campbell. We need a second. Ms. Lamont, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you remember that? Okay, now, Ms. Fochay, would you read the resolution?
Okay, it's a little lengthy, so I will read the resolution to adopt the school board election districts for the St. Bernard Parish School Board and to provide in regard thereto. Whereas Louisiana revised statutes 1771.4 and 1771.5 require that each school board in the state of Louisiana consider the redistricting of its election district boundaries after each federal decennial census. Whereas a review of the 2020 federal decennial census data evidences the necessity to redistrict the election district boundaries of the St. Bernard Parish School Board to ensure that all districts fall within acceptable population parameters. Whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board did engage Services of Strategic Demographics LLC to assist in the drafting of a redistricting plan. Whereas the members of the St. Bernard Parish School Board were each afforded the opportunity to participate in the redistricting process, and multiple plans were developed, taking into consideration legal requirements and traditional redistricting principles, including but not limited to compactness and continuity of existing districts. Whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board held a public hearing to consider the options for redistricting its election districts. Therefore, be it resolved by the St. Bernard Parish School Board that the plan entitled the STB SB Plan 2022, as described below and depicted in the shape files and block equivalency files submitted to Louisiana Secretary of State B and is hereby adopted. And such plans shall be utilized for the regularly scheduled elections in the fall of 2022 for the St. Bernard Parish School Board in accordance with Louisiana law. District 1. District 1 consists of the entirety of Precincts 10, 11, and 12, and a portion of Precinct 13, beginning at the intersection of Jean-Lafitte Parkway and Canal Number 5, then easterly along Canal Number 5 to the intersection with Garringer Canal, then southerly along Garringer Canal to the intersection with Livingston Avenue, then easterly along Livingston to the intersection with Norton Avenue, then northerly along Norton Avenue to the intersection with Surpass Drive, then easterly along Surpass Drive to the intersection with Raleigh Boulevard, then southerly along Raleigh Boulevard to the intersection with West St. Bernard Highway, then northeasterly along West St. Bernard Highway to the intersection with the boundary of Precinct 13, then along the boundary of Precinct 13 to the point of beginning. District 2. District 2 consists of the entirety of Precinct 14 and Precinct 13, less and accept the portion thereof in District 1, and a portion of Precinct 21, beginning at the intersection of the Gishard Canal and East Livingston Avenue, then easterly on Livingston Avenue to the intersection with East Chaminet Circle, then northeasterly along East Chaminet Circle to the intersection with Cochran Drive, then northerly to the intersection with Remy Street, then easterly to the intersection with the boundary of Precinct 21, then along the Precinct boundary to the point of beginning. District 3. District 3 consists of the entirety of Precincts 15 and 23 and Precinct 21, less and accept the portion in District 2. And that portion of Precinct 22, beginning at the intersection of the DeLaron Canal and East Genie Street, then easterly on East Genie Street to the intersection with DeLambert Street, then northerly on DeLambert Street to the intersection with Libero Street, then westerly on Libero Street to the intersection with Rochelle Court, then northerly on Rochelle Court to the intersection with Pierre Street, westerly on Pierre Street to the intersection with Laplace Street, then southerly on Laplace Street to the intersection with East Magnolia Drive, then westerly on East Magnolia Drive to the intersection with Turnerfoot Street, then southerly on Turnerfoot Street to the intersection with East Libero Street, and westerly on East Libero Street to the intersection with the boundary of Precinct 22, then northerly along the boundary, on the boundary of Precinct 22, continuing along said boundary to the point of beginning, and portion of Precinct 24, beginning at the intersection of Parish Road and West Genie Street, then northwesterly on West Genie Street to the intersection of the Gishard, with the Gishard Canal, also the boundary of Precinct 24, then northerly along the boundary of Precinct 24, continuing along that boundary to the point of beginning. District 4. District 4 consists of the entirety of Precincts 30 and 31, and that portion of Precinct 20, beginning at intersection of Gishard Canal and West St. Bernard Highway, then easterly on West St. Bernard Highway to the intersection with Parish Road, then southerly on Parish Road, also the boundary of Precinct 20, continuing along the boundary to the intersection with West St. Bernard Highway, then easterly on West St. Bernard Highway to the point of beginning, and that portion of Precinct 40, beginning at the intersection of Munster Boulevard and East Judge Perez Drive, then westerly on East Judge Perez Drive to the intersection with Mary Ann Drive, also the boundary of Precinct 40, then southerly along the boundary, continuing along the boundary to the intersection with East St. Bernard Highway, then easterly on East St. Bernard Highway to the intersection with Munster Boulevard, then northerly on Munster Boulevard to the point of beginning. District 5. District 5 consists of the Precinct 20, less and accept that portion in District 4, Precinct 22, less and accept the portion in District 3, and Precinct 24, less and accept that portion in District 3. All right, District 6. District 6 consists of the entirety of Precinct 25 and that portion of Precinct 32, beginning at the intersection of East Judge Perez Drive and Volpe Street, then northerly on Volpe Drive to the intersection with Utah Street, then easterly on Utah Street to the intersection with Shalona Drive, then northerly on Shalona Drive to the intersection with Florida Street, then easterly on Florida Street to the intersection with Canal Number 8, then northerly on Canal Number 8 to an unnamed waterway, also the boundary of Precinct 32, then westerly along the boundary and continuing along that boundary to the point of beginning. District 7. District 7 consists of entirety of Precincts 33, 34, and 41, and Precinct 32, less and accept that portion in District 6. District 8. District 8 consists of entirety of Precincts 42 and 43 and Precinct 40, less and accept that portion in District 4 and that portion of Precinct 42A, beginning at the intersection of East Judge Perez Drive and Uranus Drive, then southerly on Uranus Drive to the intersection with Mars Drive, then northerly on Mars Drive to Francis Avenue, then southern westerly, then southwesterly on Francis Drive to the intersection with Claiborne Avenue, then southerly on Claiborne Avenue to the intersection with Merrill Lane, then southwesterly on Merrill Lane, which turns into Henley's Trailer Court, then southerly on Henley's Trailer Court to the intersection with the boundary of Precinct 42A, then northwesterly along the boundary, continuing along the boundary to the point of beginning. District 9. District 9 consists of entirety of Precincts 44, 45, and 46, and Precinct 42, less and accept that portion in District 8, and that portion of Precinct 50, beginning at the intersection of Oak Drive and East Judge Perez Drive, then northerly on East Judge Perez Drive, also the boundary of Precinct 50, then along the boundary to the intersection with an unnamed waterway, then southeasterly along the unnamed waterway to the intersection with Acorn Drive, then southwesterly on Acorn Drive to the intersection with East Genie Street, to the intersection with Oak Drive, then southwesterly on Oak Drive to the point of beginning. District 10. District 10 consists of entirety of Precincts 52, 53, and 54, and that portion of Precinct 55, beginning at the intersection of Bayou Road and Sebastopol Lane, then southerly on Sebastopol Lane to the intersection with the Southern Railroad, also the boundary of Precinct 55, then westerly along the boundary of the railroad to the intersection of the Forti Orpren Canal, then northerly along the canal, which is also the boundary between 55 and 53, to the intersection with Bayou Road, then easterly along Bayou Road to the point of beginning. District 11. District 11 consists of entirety of Precinct 51 and Precinct 50, less and accept that portion in District 9, and Precinct 55, less and accept that portion in District 10.
Thank you, Ms. Fochay.
Need a water?
Thank you, Ms. Fochay. Do we have a motion?
Joint affirmation?
Joint affirmation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So moved.
Mr. Garrett, just to, could you please come up for a moment? Just to be certain, is there anything else we have to do? Or could you walk us through the rest of the process?
The rest of the process is this. Once y'all execute it, I'll need a certified copy of the resolution. We will submit a certified copy of the resolution as well as the actual digital file to the Secretary of State and to your registrar voters. And that's it.
And that's it.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much for helping us through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Ms. Warner?
What about Ms. Crumholt? Do you have any input? Do you have anything to say? Is the plan acceptable?
My role is just to put the voters into the districts that were passed. You know, so that's my role.
For the precincts?
To the school districts.
Right, right. Okay.
And she gets the job of when y'all divide a precinct, she's got to figure out which precinct. Which voters are precinct 42A voting?
Yes.
And not. But that's her fully, that's, and that's why the important thing, if you look at the resolution, we also, the digital file is actually the most important part of all this, because that's the actual record. And that's what generates the maps that you have here. And that's what the Secretary of State keeps. That's that official record. And we also keep, for example, everyone we did last time, it was a little easier because we just pulled up the digital files from last time, uploaded it into our system. You know, in 10 years, if I'm still doing this, and we do y'all, it might be a little easier. We won't have to recreate the map again. But like I said, y'all ready to move forward?
So, Mr. Garrett, so once we get the certified copy sent to you, you will forward that to the Secretary of State then?
Right. And remember, in that first talk, we had that, the talk about what the deadline is. That's the big deadline. The Secretary of State says you have to have it to them by 4:30 PM, by June 20th, and it's going to be to them way before that. So we don't worry about that.
And the information, you're going to work up the literal descriptions.
I actually.
For each district, because that's important to our members here and the community as well.
I was telling Superintendent, I actually got it in my head. Left my house way earlier. I got here around 5:00, so I went to Racetrack and got a cup of coffee. And I literally pulled my computer out and went ahead and rewrote the meets and bounds for the two districts that are impacted by that slight change. I mean, it wasn't much, but I will email that to Superintendent Boase, so each one of you will have an actual meets and bounds of your district. And we will also send digital maps, you know, the big digital maps that you, that you need.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
God bless you.
Okay. That's a big load off our shoulders right there. Okay.
No, I'm okay.
I am to be placed on a committee meeting agenda. It's, you have up to five days before we get together with Ms. Fochay or get in touch with Angie. And if you want anything, put it on the agenda for the, for the committee meeting.
And that's March 15th, right?
Yes, because we will be in conference, you know, on, for the March 8th. Well, really, we're coming back that day, you know, from the conference, because we got to do the extended education. And so it's a, it's a conference for about two or three days.
Thank you, Mr. England.
You are. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Superintendent goes, Ms. Fochay.
It just seems like we've done a lot tonight. I just want to remind everyone that Friday will be the last day of school before Mardi Gras, that we do have our, our students marching in many of the parades. As Mr. England talked about the very beginning, they were absolutely wonderful Saturday. Every one of our schools were represented. They looked really good. We will have many of them, or at least our high school marching in many of the parades in Orleans and Jefferson Parish as well. So it's a very active season for them. Next week, which is Mardi Gras week, our students will be off the entire week. Our office here will be open on Thursday and Friday, but the students will be out for the entire week. And we will welcome our students back on Monday, March 7th. And as Mr. Warner pointed out, our committee meeting for March will be on the 15th, followed the following week, the 22nd, which would, which will be our regularly scheduled monthly board meeting.
Right. And I just want to save one little note that we are really blessed, you know, to have a partnership, you know, with the refineries, and it shows tonight. You know, what we put together, you know, you got the Special Olympics, you got the autism, you know. These people just working with our school system, and we working with them. So we are, this is a community that's really together, and we really appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Fochay. Do have a motion to adjourn.
Move with.
Sure. Have a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Dyson. All in favor?
Aye.
This means a good night.